April 27, 2020. I'll have a motion on that.
So moved, set.
Second. As amended.
You gotta go through it all.
As amended, correct?
Yes, as amended.
As amended. All right, Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
Okay, passed. Next is Chair's Business, and we have to set the public hearing date for proposed rezoning of land off Valley Street identified in parcel 82 and Marlboro Hub LLC. We've booked the first time we can have that meeting is June 22nd. Is that set okay with everybody on the planning board? Any objections? Okay, we'll set that for June 22nd. Next, we have to set a public, Part B, set a public hearing date for a zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to add a new section creating large-scale ground found in solar photovoltaic cells. And we'll also set that for June 22nd if that's all right. Okay, and I've asked that somebody who is more knowledgeable comes and presents at that point because I couldn't tell exactly where they were planning on doing that from the maps provided. Number C, not on program, having a an update on the livestock issue from that we sent forward to City Council. Ms. Roby here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here. Sorry, I was unmute.
Yeah. Did you want to say something about where that stands?
My hope is that the council will actually vote on it tonight. Tonight, if it is not voted on, we will have to start all over again. So I believe there is support for this, and we'll see what happens.
There were some changes, however. You added a couple of changes based on our
Yes, I am recommending two changes based on the information that you had sent to us. I am proposing, oops, sorry, I opened up my wrong, nope, there it is. I am proposing that we add at the end of the new section, "The selling of eggs is prohibited and no chicken coop shall be located between the street frontage and the primary structure front building line." That was approved by the solicitor that we would not need to re-advertise, and the language for the frontage came from the building commissioner. So he has what he feels is the correct verbiage to cover that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Chris, you've been very heavily involved in this. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah. What were the thoughts on the changing or actually locating the coops in the rear yards and having certain setbacks from existing structures and the meeting, the accessory structure?
I have comments that I will be making at tonight's council meeting that I'll be happy to share, but one of them was specific about the accessory structures. Mr. Cook did confirm that chicken coops already fall under the accessory use rules in the code, and that if the coop is under 200 square feet, it would be exempt from the building permit process. But even if it's under 200 square feet, it still needs to meet the requirements of the accessory structure. So that regulation would not allow the coop to be closer than 10 feet to the principal structure and no closer than five feet to any side or rear lot line. And we've already added the language, or I plan to add the language, that they would not be allowed in the front yard.
Yep. How about the other zones? I know you were to, the original paperwork showed that basically any zone besides, I think it was the Marlboro, the Village District, they were going to be allowed in. Are you looking to adjust any of that?
I am not, and I am, I don't know that any other counselor is planning on doing it. I'm not aware of any. In talking through this with the committee when we met, and most of the council, I believe, was present at that meeting, nobody felt that there was a need to change where those were. So I'm not proposing to change it.
And how about being owner-occupied property?
I am not proposing to change that either. And I think the sense of everybody was that limiting it to them was not a good way to go. And the comments that we got from people from the residents that sent comments to the council indicated that they felt that that was not fair. I think that if somebody owned a property, if you owned a one-family, I mean, if you own a multi-family building, or if you were an owner of an apartment complex, that you could certainly put your own restrictions on to anybody that was renting. They may not want a chicken coop in their backyard, so they could tell a tenant, "You can't have one here," and they would be within their rights to do that.
Counselor Roby, I'd like to weigh in on the rental issue. So as someone who's been a landlord, I can tell you that tenants do some crazy things. Chickens can survive two to three days without water. So when you have a tenant that leaves unexpectedly and abandons their chickens, not only are the neighbors living with improperly disposed chicken excrement, but they're also dealing with decomposing chickens. If you're dealing with a absentee landlord, that's going to go on for weeks. So that's one concern because, I mean, tenants come and go. I had a tenant that kept a turtle in a finished basement in one of the rooms with no cage. So so I do think that the non-owner-occupied issue is worthy of further discussion because we're going to have, like I said, tenants leave, those chickens are dead in two to three days in mild weather. If it's a hot summer day, once the water's gone, they're dead in a day, day and a half. The other issue is looking at the Board of Health Regulation. So I looked at them with the idea of, okay, let's say that I want to keep chicken coop in my backyard. Okay, the regulations are not where they need to be. If we're talking about a property like where I live, where I could have a chicken coop on both sides of me and one behind me. So I can deal, I can have chickens all over the place. There aren't adequate, there isn't an adequate definition of proper disposal. I think we're putting the cart before the horse by passing this without comprehensive regulations in place, and they're not there. They just simply are not there.
Okay, well, you know, I don't want to pile on to the counselor who's been good enough to come to our meetings. And, you know, I appreciate that you've been listening to what we have to say. We'll look forward to seeing what happens at your meeting later on. I think we've made ourselves clear.
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate the comments of Mr. Fay. I know Mr. Garfide is anxiously waiting for this to get approved, if it does. And I know that the code enforcement has been sitting back waiting and not doing anything. Once this is approved, if it is approved tonight or in the future, it's not going to be tomorrow, but I think code enforcement will be taking steps. And I know that Mr. Garfide made it clear to me that he has the ability through mass general law to enforce animal control issues, and he would not hesitate to use that ability if there were issues. And I would think a phone call to him saying, "I've got unattended chickens in my backyard," would bring him to the doorstep pretty quickly. But as you said, we will see what happens tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have an A and R, and this is McQuary or McQuary Drive. Is there somebody here to present this?
Hang on.
Yes, hi. This is Dan Bremser from Hancock Associates. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the planning board. This is not my plan, though. This is a different
I just shared it again. Hang on a second.
She had it up a moment ago, so it's there somewhere.
Okay.
Why don't you talk a little bit about it?
Sure.
And start with whether it's going to be Mac or Mick.
Okay, so
It's only planned two different ways.
Yes. McQuary Drive. It's spelled one way on the subdivision plan, another way on the road-taking plan, and we're modifying the plan to spell it. In fact, I think, Krista, did the revised plan that I sent on Friday, did that make any
Are you not showing, seeing us?
Okay. I, actually, I, yeah, but I can see it, but I can't quite read it. But in any event, we're, it is spelled two different ways, not a big deal. We were hired a few years ago by several people in this subdivision to stake out a bunch of lot corners out here. And in doing so, we discovered that Mr. Sawa's driveway was on Mr. Ethier's property. And the purpose of this plan is to create a little triangular lot called parcel 16A, and it holds the property line five feet off the pavement so as not to create a zoning issue with a distance to a driveway. There's a zoning table in the plan, and we show that the remaining land on the Ethier lot, which is Lot 16B, complies to all the zoning requirements, and that pretty much covers it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Can you all see the plan now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll have a motion to refer this to engineering.
So moved.
I have a second.
Who was that make the motion?
Matt Elder.
Okay, and the second was?
Chris.
Chris.
So we have to go through the roll call again?
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a public hearing, and this is the Commonwealth Heights Public Hearing. And in reference to state law, we hereby declare this public hearing open, and it's a continuation of the existing meeting. Would you read the materials?
Notice is hereby given that the Marlboro Planning Board will reopen public hearing and be continued without public testimony on June 8, 2020, at which time, public testimony will be heard.
All right. And therefore, unless there's any disagreement, I will be closing the public hearing at this point.
Yep.
We have people here? No?
No, no, no.
We're not closing the public hearing. It's the other one we're closing. We're going to continue it until
Yep, continue it until
June 8, and we'll be notifying the abutters that we're taking testimony at that time.
Thank you for the catch. All right. Next, we have another continued meeting, and according to state law, we'll continue discussion of the proposed zoning amendment regarding storage yards. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on this? No? Hearing none?
Oh, Madam.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It was my understanding the mayor was going to also speak, and I see he's on here, but he didn't unmute. So I will go first, I guess, or maybe he's not planning to speak. My name is Katie Roby. I'm a city counselor. I just want to make a couple of comments. In December of 2018, a similar order was on the council agenda, although it also had language.
Counselor Roby, can you hang on one second, please? Don't we have to go through and read the notice of the public hearing before we start the public hearing?
Yes.
You know, we also had some, George, are you following along on the agenda?
I've got the statements, yes.
But on the previous item, I'm sorry, you went so fast. We have a couple of notices in there, actually. The notice requesting the extension on the decision for the Commonwealth Heights.
Okay, let's go back and pick them up after we finish this.
Okay.
Okay. Notice is hereby given. The planning board of City Marlboro will hold a remote public hearing on April 27, 2027 PM. To amend, Chapter 650, Section 51718 of the zoning code, City Marlboro will amend the zoning map established by Section, by 650, Chapter, Section 8. This public hearing will be open with no testimony from the public being heard and continued until May 18, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
All right. And as a courtesy, although it's not open for public hearing, we would like to collaborate with you guys if you'd like to make a statement. Ms. Roby?
Thank you, Dr. Fenby. So back as I was saying, in December of 2018, a similar order was on the council agenda, although it also had language about home occupation and home office. A public hearing was held by both the city council and the planning board. You agreed that the city should regulate home offices and contractor and landscape contractor yards, but you had several recommendations. Due to comments from the planning board and the counselors, a revised order was presented in April of 2019, and a joint public hearing was held on June 3. You had a lengthy discussion with the building commissioner and code enforcement before they attended the public hearing. I only know this because of the minutes. I wasn't at the meeting. They returned, you returned to your planning board meeting to discuss and voted to make a favorable recommendation with several comments. Also, on the June 3 agenda was a letter from the solicitor with an amendment to the code change specifically about home offices. That was tabled till the June 17 meeting. On June 17, that was referred to Urban Affairs. I don't believe a meeting was ever held to discuss it, but on August 26, 2019, an amendment to the zoning to define home office and home occupations was submitted. If you remember, that was approved, but nothing was ever brought back to the council specific to contractor or landscape contractor yards. On July 8, 2019, both Charles Trombetta and Gina DiMatio were issued zoning violation letters under Section 65017 Table of Uses, the contractor yards not permitted, along with two other citations. They appealed to the ZBA, but they were denied in September of last year. In October, the council was informed that the Trombetta family LP and Gina DiMatio were appealing to Land Court, the ZBA's decision to deny their appeal. Since that filing, the city solicitor has been working with the attorneys for both parties. You should understand that this zoning amendment is the culmination of the work of the city solicitor and the plaintiff's attorney. I ask for the council's support for this zoning amendment.
Thank you very much. You said the mayor was here and wanted to speak?
She is here. I don't know if he's planning to speak or not.
Okay.
I'll give you my two cents. Thank you very much to the chair and to members. Again, I just wanted to lend my support to this. I think everyone knows quite a bit about it. It's been around for a long time. We beat this thing to death. In the process of the court actions, the solicitor, Mr. Grossfield, who was here tonight also, had basically negotiated something with the parties in the lawsuit. They are both supporting this ordinance. I think it's something that we should move forward with as quickly as possible. It's an issue throughout the city, and this is extremely similar to what was proposed a while back. I think some of the misinformation that was out there prior has been cleared up. And again, we should definitely be moving forward with this, and I hope the council does the same. But I do want to clarify one thing. This has been negotiated, and this is really an all or nothing type proposal. Either it goes through as is, or it doesn't go through at all.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak here from the board? If not
Madam Chairman, and I believe that the planning board received three communications from the solicitor that we would, if you, I did talk to Gina DiMatio. She did not plan on attending, but would like the information read into the record.
Please.
Thank you.
Dear counselors, I am writing on behalf of my client Gina DiMatio individually and as trustee of 729 Farm Trust to confirm for the record that she supports the proposed zoning ordinance amendments negotiated with the city, including the proposed map change. It will file a stipulation of dismissal with prejudice with the Middlesex Superior Court for the pending zoning board of appeals case regarding her property within 14 days of passage of the proposed zoning amendments. Very truly yours, Donald J. O'Neil, Counselor at Law. Next, dear Honorable President, Austinian counselors, enclosed for submittal, please find letters of support for the proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to contractors' yards and map amendment for parcel 85-12 as received from counsel for Gina DiMatio individually and as trustee of the 729 Farm Trust and Trombetta Family Limited Partnership. I recommend these letters be referred to committee for the proposed zoning amendments. The office, this office represents a zoning board of appeals, and the above referenced appeals filed by each party from the ZBA's decision of holding certain determinations of the building commissioner's office and his work collaboratively to engage in discussions with the above parties on a proposed approach to address the type of land use as part of the city zoning ordinance. As the enclosed letters both reference, each party supports adoption of the amendments and has agreed to dismiss their respective pending litigation if the zoning amendments are adopted. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. Jason Grossfield, City Solicitor. Next, dear Attorney Grossfield, as we have discussed, please accept this letter from my client Trombetta Family Limited Partnership, owner of the property known as 655 Farm Road, Marlboro, Massachusetts, Trombetta, fully supports the proposed zoning ordinance amendment as recommended and attached here to as Exhibit A. If the zoning ordinance amendment is passed, Trombetta will file a stipulation of dismissal with prejudice in regard to the above referenced matter within 14 days. Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions. Christopher J. Alpin, Esquire, Attorney at Law. Lastly, dear Honorable President, Austinian counselors, the zoning board of appeals met on February 25, 2020, and voted to express the ZBA's support for adoption of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to contractors' yards and landscape contractors' yards and a zoning map amendment for parcel 85-12 now under consideration by the city council. Please accept this letter of support for the record as part of the city council's consideration of the zoning amendments. Don't hesitate to contact me with any questions. Paul Giannotti, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals.
We've got somebody named Victoria waiting in the lobby. Can she be admitted? Thank you. All right. I'll have a motion to accept and file all the correspondence regarding this.
So moved.
Chris.
Second, George.
Okay.
Mr. Elder.
Yeah.
Mr. Albert votes yeah. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
All right. With no further input, I hereby declare this public hearing closed, and we will move on toward a discussion from the board regarding what they wish to do at this time. Sean?
Yeah, so I just want to remind the board how we're supposed to be looking at these zoning amendments. You know, our stated standard is, does it benefit the city? Is it otherwise consistent with the purpose of the zoning regulations? Does it fit into the neighborhood, and what is the impact on the neighbors? That's the standard that we've always followed. It's a little bit more difficult when it's a citywide change as opposed to one specific property, but that's our standard. So I understand that this is kind of a take it or leave it proposition based on what the mayor and Counselor Roby have told us, but there are some issues with the existing yards, and I just would like to ask the counselors that are here how those issues are going to be addressed. There are, in walking the residential properties, there are materials that are piled right up along the fence lines of the abutters. There is storage material that is more suitable for a landfill that isn't going to be used on an additional project. There's storage of material on top of containers, like the, you know, the Eagle containers, then you have more material stored on top, and these are visible from abutters. And then I, there's no five-foot, no five-foot buffer requirement for the existing yards versus somebody who comes in for a special permit, which I thought was a curious difference. So, you know, those are issues that I, just in the walking around and looking at the properties and taking photos, there are things that I noticed without, you know, going too far into the properties. So is there a plan to address those issues, and how are we going to protect the abutters of the existing yards here?
Ms. Roby?
Madam Chairman, through you to Mr. Fay, I do not know the answer to that question. I, it is my understanding that issues that arise would be dealt with as zoning violations and would be dealt with through the code enforcement office.
Madam, this is Jason Grossfield, City Solicitor.
Pardon?
This is Jason Grossfield, City Solicitor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, speak up, though.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. If I could sort of lend a few words to that, to the questions from Mr. Fay. You know, generally, what this ordinance will do for existing yards is essentially subject them to, you know, a limited site plan review. And I think a couple of the aspects of that site plan review will include things like screening and things like the size of the yard. Those are provisions that I think, you know, that were the subject of extensive negotiations. And I think the intention of those changes are to bring these, you know, these eligible existing yards into the fold and to be able to have city, you know, professional staff look at each of those and work collaboratively with those yards to address the issues in ways that they really can't be addressed in the status quo. You know, as it sits today, there may be any number of yards that, while they may be not be permitted uses in the city, they're essentially not subject to any regulatory oversight either. So without strict code enforcement on every single yard, this is essentially a way where the community can have those kinds of concerns addressed in the existing yard scenario. And I think, as Counselor Roby mentioned, you know, this is one piece of the zoning code. You obviously have the whole zoning code, so the building department can enforce, you know, for example, if there's a setback issue, the building department can enforce the setback in that particular district. So I think there's a number of ways that the building department can see to those concerns that could come up with an existing yard.
Sean?
I just wanted to, so just in the example, and maybe the solicitor could address this. So in one of the photos that I took, I was standing on a residential abutters property, and there was a pile of material that was used by a contractor that was right up along the fence. and there was a pile of material that was used by a contractor that was right up along the fence. So in the site plan review or the building department is going to be able to point to a regulation somewhere in the zoning code or somewhere in the rules and regulations that, where they will be able to say, you can't place this material right along the property line of the abutter because I didn't see it in the rules. So maybe I'm, maybe I missed it. I'm just curious what the authority is to enforce something that at least I haven't seen that's there. So, I mean, I understand, this is a very necessary step. I understand that. And I just question whether it go, whether it goes far enough to protect the abutters to these existing yards.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Thank you. Just to address some of those, first of all, I want to clearly admit that the code enforcement has completely dropped the ball on these over the years. And we needed something in place to kind of control some of the issues that were out there and being fair to some of our contractors and our residents that are trying to run businesses. And that's what we've done since the beginning of this whole thing. And we can push and we can keep talking about getting a whole wolf, which I think was the intent of some last time. And that's just not going to happen. We're going to kick it down the road a little farther. We, we, I've addressed with the commission of the fact that code enforcement, once this is put in place, we'll start working on these contractor yards immediately and addressing some of the shortfalls in some of them that currently exist. But to think we're going to have the perfect ordinance here, we are not. And we also have an ordinance in place that says if it doesn't exist in us, in our, our code, then it isn't allowed in the city. So this is some way that we've, we're looking to put in place to get somewhere in this. And I think it's a great addition. I think it's a little bit more beneficial than the ordinance that was put in place last year. And it addresses the majority of the contractor yards in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Madam Chairman, if I may also refer Mr. Fay to number one of the addition of number three to the order where it talks about screening. Screening is required for both vehicles and materials stored on the property. So if there are things that are visible that you have found today, those would have to be hidden behind screening of some sort.
Thank you, counselor, and, and thank you, Mayor Vigen as well. And also thinking while I was listening to the mayor's answer that code enforcement does have the anti-blight ordinance is, as a tool as well.
Right. Based on all this, would anybody like to make a motion regarding this?
This is George. I'll move to approve.
Would you, Sean, would you like to add anything to that?
I think, I think, have we already closed the public hearing?
Yes.
I think it probably makes sense for us to, just to make sure that our, our recommendation is worded properly.
Okay.
So.
Also, quick question. Are we also, when we vote this, are we also voting for the zoning amendment or for the map amendment? Or is that a separate?
No, this is the whole, the whole thing.
Without the, without the map amendment, the zoning, the zoning change wouldn't apply to one of the largest existing yards in that city.
I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, it applies to everything. Yes. Okay. Would you like to, we have a, a motion on the table. Would you like to discuss that further or want to give it some thought? How do people wish to proceed?
What was the motion? My computer shut off real quick. What was the motion on the table? I didn't hear it.
It was a motion to rec and approval.
So I just want. Withdraw if there's more, if there's more discussion required.
I, I just want to mention one other thing in, in there. You know, we're, we're also dealing with one of these properties that has multiple violations of other regulations in the city. Trucks parked on the grass that have, that contain advertising, illegal signs and so forth. And I just think that we should encourage code enforcement to address these issues while this property is on everyone's radar.
Okay.
It is, it is inconsistent with our stated policy to provide a favorable recommendation for property that is grossly out of compliance, whether they're asking, I understand that they're not asking for the relief, but it's just inconsistent with our stated policy.
So how, how would you like, there's been no second on this. And George has said he will withdraw his motion. Is there somebody who would like to take a?
I just, what I'm saying is that, I mean, this obviously is something that has to move forward.
Yes.
I just think it's an opportunity for, you know, for this, for these other issues to be reviewed because there are several. Just driving by, you can see, you know, signs on fences. You know, the, the advertising on trucks parked on grass. In, you know, some of us on the, the board are also business owners and we could never get away with that kind of stuff. So.
So are, are you suggesting that the motion be modified to include those things?
I'm, I am, I'm raising it as a point of discussion. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me.
I do. I do have, I do agree with Sean on pretty much everything he said. I also, you know, by looking at this, it looks like we're giving these guys 24 months to, you know, meet with site plan and go through all that and give them, you know, these are very, very established business with architects and lawyers and, you know, been running for a very, very long time and giving them 24 months to get through site plan seems like, you know, nothing's going to happen for the first 20 months or so and they kind of get, you know, a two-year pass to come into compliance with some of these things. So I think a 24-month timeframe to complete site plan is an exceptionally long time.
Okay.
And I know site plan is a slow process. I understand that, you know, with the way they meet and sometimes it's inconsistent and summer schedules and all that. But it seems like giving them two years to complete a site plan review when we've had apartment buildings do it in a month. You know, two years to get all this done to me seems very, very lengthy.
Anybody else? Phil, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, I don't think there's a right answer on this one.
Uh huh. So.
We clearly have, have problems with the proposals, but is it the best we're going to get? We're better off with nothing than, than what's been proposed. Seems to me it's perhaps the step in the right direction, as flawed as it is. We certainly should condition our, our approval to raise our, raise our concerns about compliance in general, at the very least.
All right. So there seems to be some consensus. I certainly agree with that. So.
So Dr. Fendby, I think we, I think I would be comfortable with making a favorable recommendation, encouraging the city to use all of its resources to address the issues with the existing yards with setbacks and storage of materials and the multi-level storage of materials on top of, of containers to protect as best they can the abutters to these properties and also ask code enforcement to address the other outstanding violations that don't have to do with contractors' yards on these properties.
Okay, George, would you like to second that?
Say if that's, if that's a motion, I'd be willing to second it.
Okay. All right. And we'll go through the roll call.
Through the roll. Mr. Elder.
No.
Mr. Elder votes no. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
And Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. La Venture votes yes. Mr. Russ. Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Motion carries.
Can we ask Mr. Elder why he voted no and if he wants that letter?
Yeah, you know, it's, um, the process is somewhat bothering to me. I, you know, our backs are against the wall, which, you know, I get it. We have to move forward with it. You know, I really don't like that we're giving these guys two years to come into compliance. I understand asking code enforcement to really push forward on this is all we can do, but there's no real teeth to that. I mean, you and Dr. Fendby have been here longer than I have, but I'm not quite sure I remember people appealing and solicitors working with people who appeal to kind of hone in on what the city is going to approve. So it's more of a procedural way that we got here. You know, I'd figured I was going to be in the minority. I'm not going to yell and scream about that, but it's more the procedural aspects. I also don't like the two-year window to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Let's clarify. All right. We need to go back to the prior public hearing, which is Commonwealth Heights, which we continued. This is reopening the Commonwealth Heights public subdivision as per state regulations and we need to read in some literature.
To Chair Fendby and members of the board, given the extenuating circumstances during this pandemic and the related governor's orders regarding the municipal permitting, I'm hereby requesting an extension of time to July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty for the review and consideration of the application of the approval of definitive subdivision plan referred to as Commonwealth Heights. As of this date, all revised plans and reports have been submitted to the city and this extension request will afford time for the board to receive testimony and comments at its meeting on June eight, twenty twenty at seven PM for consideration of the revised shortened subdivision road proposal and issue a decision thereafter. Feel free to comment, contact me with any questions. Please stay safe and healthy. Thank you. Scott Weiss, Vice President, Development, Gutierrez Companies.
Will you accept and file that?
So moved.
And to approve the extension.
I think we already did that.
We did that, but we do need to get this moving forward though, because then we can do, we can do the public hearing for this. And I mean, get it, get it done.
Yeah.
George, I'll second.
Okay. Go through the roll call.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. La Venture votes yes. Mr. Russ. Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Okay, the public meeting is again closed. No, not closed. The public hearing is again postponed until the next next meeting after this. All right. We have still before us subdivision progress report on Goodell Estates.
Tom.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi. So they.
Hi, Tom. Nice to see you.
Hi, good to see you. So there, there's been a lot of activity there. They, things were progressing right along with Mr. Gillis's intent to get everything upcoming deadline next month. A couple of construction snafus have come up that he is going to update the board on at your next meeting. Basically, the utilities for one of the lots were found during the survey for one of the site plans to be not in the correct location and there was really no solution to it other than to dig at the location of those stubs to move them a little bit onto the proper lot. And the other thing was the fact that there wasn't a gas main on the property yet. And Mr. Gillis intends to service the lots with gas as was proposed on the approved plan. So he's at the mercy of Eversource now for that piece of it. So he's going to, based on his discussions with Tim, provide the, the necessary materials to the board to request a bond extension, a bond reduction at the next meeting and request an extension to get the subdivision finished. Now, just say from our perspective, there's activity now on, on at least some, if not all of the house sites. So as I mentioned to the board last time, it, it's preferable to us that they don't finish paving the road until the bulk of the heavy construction is done on the lot. So I think this sort of, an extension to allow the paving to happen later in the year is favorable in that respect. So based on his correspondence, like I said, at the next meeting, your next meeting, he intends to request an extension and he, he's supposed to provide a construction schedule with that request. So we'll have a better idea hopefully as to the timeline and whenever Source is telling him they can get the gas main installed.
Okay, thank you.
I.
Phil, how does that look from your point of view? You pass it all the time.
Yeah, no, I have a, I do have a question on it and it's, it's not necessarily from passing it, although I have been over there. They have had a jackhammer running almost continuously for the last week. Apparently a tractor mounted jackhammer. Didn't hear it today, but today's the first day.
Yes.
For a long time. I just wondered when that's going to end.
I can try to, to find out, but I think unfortunately the short answer is not anytime soon because that, there, there are lots, especially up at the top of the property. There's a lot of ledge up there. We can try to get a handle on, you know, sort of where they are in the construction of those lots. But if you, if you notice, if you saw the, the road during construction, you sort of saw the end of the cul-de-sac and then a big wall of basically rock at the end. So they're, they're sort of dealing with that now on those house sites that are up on top.
I'm probably half mile away from it and it's loud here. So I kind of wonder about the neighbors that are even closer. It'd be nice if they could proceed and get that portion wrapped up.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll visit the site and try to get an idea of the scope of that part of the work.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on this? Okay, there are none. We will move on to correspondence. And we have a memo from the city engineer regarding the floodplain. I told George you didn't have to read this into the record because it's lengthy, but wondered if you could give us the Cliff Notes version of it.
Sure. So they are, this project is before the board because they need a special permit for the floodplain of Wetlands Protection District that basically, as I, I think I showed a schematic last time of the project and the fact that they are filling some of the floodplain. They're not filling any wetland, but they're proposing to fill some floodplain. I've provided conservation with some comments based on my review of that. And the long and short of it was that, that this is an area we know that some of the flooding impacts some of the abutters. And basically made the suggestion that the site engineers sort of, number one, try to design in some more factor of safety. They, they're proposing to compensate for the flood storage. But we know about some, the improvements on Route twenty are going to add some, incrementally are going to add some runoff to this, the Broad Metal Brook in this area. And it would be good if we could, since they have some room, provide some extra compensatory flood storage on the project. And the other big thing. And the other big thing that I requested is that in their, um, the way they've analyzed stormwater and the flood conditions, um, was to look more, um, at the big picture and pick the design point that was sort of, um, downstream of the project at the confluence of another, uh, brook that joins Broad Meadow. And I think what they should do is look at the three, the three or four culverts that are on the property that individually sort of have their own flood characteristics and just make sure they're not making any one of those issues any worse. Um, I think there's at least, there may be at least one of the culverts that could probably be upsized. So it was some, it's some request that they, uh, changed the way they've analyzed, uh, the project. And then there were some other, um, some other questions that I had that they, they, um, indicated at the conservation meeting that they would address, uh, each of the points that I had in my memo. I have, we did receive late today some revised plans that I'm assuming may have been, uh, an attempt to address those, but I haven't looked at it yet.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for him about this? And we also had a, uh, notice of, uh, affordable housing rent. I'll have a motion to accept and file both pieces of correspondence?
So moved.
Go ahead, we will go through our roll call.
Mr. Elder?
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby?
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
Uh, and we missed, uh, everything under 12, which we also have to accept and file. Do I have a second? Okay, we have to go through it again.
Mr. Elder?
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes.
This is for 10. Wait, yeah, this is for 12. Right, go ahead.
Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes enthusiastically yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yeah.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby?
Yes.
All right.
You're getting this down, Spock. This is really cool. All right. We jumped over to number 10, which is.
Excuse me, before you go on?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Steve Peck and you've kind of very quickly went through, uh, the engineer's review of the floodplain?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Uh, I do not believe they can, included an emergency exit.
Excuse me, who are you?
My name is Steve Peck, um, one of the abutters to the property.
This is not a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this was just a matter of information to us. This is a letter that's gone to, um, uh, to conservation and it's conservation that's going to be doing the oversight of this. It was just a matter of information. Okay?
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. It's all right. I'd rather have you do that than feel like we've overlooked you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we had draft policy discussion, zoning and variances. Did we want to go further with that today or?
If we don't go further with it today, we should set it, set a time when we're going to pick it up again.
Well, would you like to go further with it today or?
Well, I mean, I think we're, I, I don't know that we've had any additional comments from the last meeting. I think it, uh, I think the only thing that we were trying to work out from the last meeting is what the, what the process is going to be. So someone comes to us for assigned variance, how do we determine whether the, whether the use of the property is allowed or not? That's, are we doing that on our own or are we asking code enforcement for a letter? I think that was our, I think that was our, the last thing we were trying to work through.
And we'd also asked for some information on, uh, from legal on this. Is that correct? But we haven't heard anything on that.
That's correct.
So shall we roll it over till next time and maybe you and I, Sean, and anybody else who's interested can put their two cents into how we feel like that monitoring should go and so we can have it nailed down for next time?
I, yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay. All right. All right. I think unless there's anything else outstanding, we're ready to close. Would somebody like to make a motion, Mr. Elder?
Move to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, we go through the whole thing again.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fenby?
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, this has worked out fairly well and I appreciate your, uh, good nature about it from everybody. Thank you, Krista, for keeping us.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye.